A little hack.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize to you. It's a couple of minutes after six and we're supposed to start at six, but we ran a little bit overtime at the pre-commission meeting. We've got folks taking a comfort break and will be in here momentarily, so bear with us for just another minute or two and we'll get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A quorum having convened, let me call to order this meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, October 1st. This is our regular commission meeting. We're glad each and every one of you are here. We will start tonight, as we typically do, with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'll call on Pastor Gary Gooden to come to the podium and turn on that microphone. And also, we've got two students, Nicholas Battle and Kaitlyn Dixon. If y'all would come down and stand behind the pastor and when he's through with his invocation, they'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand as you're able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Pastor Gooden?
Let's pray. Lord, in the book of Proverbs, it tells us to trust in the Lord with all of our heart and lean not on our own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him and he will direct your path. So Father, I pray for every commissioner and I ask you to give them wisdom and to direct their path. Give them skill and vision and courage to be the leaders that you want them to be. I thank you for the businesses and schools, the government workers and churches and others that work to make our community great. And in the same way that you bless us, help us to show compassion and bless others. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Join us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. Pastor Gooden, thank you again for being with us tonight. Pastor Gooden is the executive director of the Mid-State Baptist Association since 2013. And for over sixty years, the Mid-State Baptist Association of Churches has been working together to help strengthen families and communities. Pastor Gooden, thank you very much for what you do for our community, in our community, and thank you for being here tonight. The pledge of allegiance was led by Nicholas Battle and Kaitlyn Dixon. Nicholas and Kaitlyn, are y'all still here or have you slipped out on me? No, they still up there around the corner. Nicholas loves to play football in his spare time. He also loves video game and says he's pretty good at them. His favorite color is red, just like his birthstone, which is ruby. Nicholas' birthday is July 31st. He had one brother and enjoys spending time with his brother. And Kaitlyn, you still out there? Ask Kaitlyn. Kaitlyn loves to dance and her favorite color is blue. She also loves to read and has several favorite authors, including C.J. Lewis, J.K. Rowling, Barbara Park, Dr. Seuss. Kaitlyn loves to wear several different types of shoes, including vans, Jordans, heels and sandals. Kaitlyn enjoys spending time with her family. She had one brother. You know, it's great when we hear so much bad about young people, to see two such fine examples of young people coming along. We appreciate your being here, Nicholas and Kaitlyn, and we wish you all the best in your future schoolwork in Endowes. Thank you for being here. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. And the minutes of our pre-commission meeting held September 17th and our regular commission meeting held on September 17th have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections we need to make in those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve by Commissioner Nguyen, approve as written, second by Shepherd? All in favor, say, approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the minutes are adopted. There are no invited guests tonight and no proclamations to present, but we're glad each and every one of you are here. You're all our VIPs and we appreciate you being here to attend this meeting of the commission. Did we check the sign-in sheet to see? Are there any? Nobody has signed up to talk about an agenda item, but several people have signed up to talk about non-agenda items, so we'll recognize you a little bit later in the program. That being so, the next item on our agenda then are the reports from our standing committees. And I'll start with the Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on September 24th, 2019 and took the following action. The committee received its monthly financial report from our finance director. The committee approved the following SPOSP projects. An agreement with Custom Stage Services for stage repairs to the Douglas Theater in the amount of $76,698. We approved an agreement with Mid-State Striping for road restriping in the amount of $66,312.48. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next, Economic and Community. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir, for indulging. I also need to tell the community about our public hearing on the changes to the occupational tax occurring October 8th at 6:00 p.m.
Very good. That's public hearing, 6:00 p.m., October 8th, for changes in the law regarding occupation taxes and how they are assessed and collected. Good. Public hearing, October 6th. Here. October 8th, I'm sorry, at 6:00. October 8th, at 6:00, public hearing, here, on occupational taxes. Thank you very much, Chairman Watkins. Next report will be given by Economic and Community Development, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on September 24th, 2019 and took the following actions. The committee heard a report from recent Georgia Wellness and Fitness Festival. That was given by the director and founder, Ms. Sharice Stevens. The committee also heard a report from the county attorney's office regarding the funds received from the recent filming, which has taken place and some that are ongoing in Macon-Bibb. The committee approved the placement of a memorial plaque in front of Center Hill Baptist Church honoring Reverend Leroy Reeves, Jr. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Next committee is Public Safety Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Shepherd.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met September 24th, 2019 and heard the following presentations. Sheriff David Davis and his senior staff presented information regarding the presence of surveillance cameras, which they have found to deter crime and provide for public safety. Mr. Kevin Collins of the Better Business Bureau reported on scams currently in Macon-Bibb County and how to best not become a victim of scams. And then Commissioner Watkins reported on the concept of an Office of Neighborhood Safety. This concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Shepherd. Final committee is Facilities and Engineering, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Thank you, sir. Facilities and Engineering met also on September 24th and took the following action. The committee approved the changes to the code in regards to the local subdivision design manual. We were advised by county engineer Dave Fortson on this matter. Number two, the committee also approved acceptance of certain maintained roads as registered roads for public use as part of the county road system. And number three, the committee approved designating a portion of New Forsyth Road within 100 feet of the entrance of the Academy of Classical Education, known as ACE, as the school zone, which is long overdue. That completes the report of Facilities and Engineering.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is applications for alcohol beverage licenses. The committee, at pre-commission, the committee of the whole took these licenses up for consideration. Each license application is accompanied by all of the requisite required information. That is a certificate of a satisfactory background check by the sheriff of the applicant's criminal history, a certificate by the business development services that the appropriate license fees have been tendered for the licenses. Saw a planning and zoning certificate to certify that the location is in the appropriate zoning districts, the district or the location is properly zoned for an alcohol beverage license application. And the measurement form, which comes from the county engineer's office to certify that all of the necessary distance separation requirements have been met, along with a copy of the ad that ran in the telegraph to notify the public of this. The license applications that we have received, first is from Shanae Codall Incorporated doing business as Jim Food Mart at 1920 Jeffersonville Road for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Further information confirms that this is not a new location, it's just a change of ownership that required the new license. The second is from Christopher Lamar doing business as Quick Serve Emery LLC at 584 Emery Highway. It also is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location, and it also is a change of ownership and not a new location. And the third and final application is from 2630 Emery, Inc., DBA Exxon Food Mart at 2630 Emery Highway. It is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location, and it may be a new location. I'm just not familiar with that. It may be because it's not denoted that it was an existing location before, so it could be a new location for beer and wine package sales to go, 2630 Emery Highway, Exxon Food Mart. The committee of the whole recommends approval of these three license applications. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of these three licenses signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and these three licenses will be issued as requested. That takes us now to the next item on the agenda, which is old business. And the first item of old business concerns the census, the 2020 census, which will be on April 1st of 2020, and our efforts locally to ensure that we have a complete count. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission establishing the Complete Count Committee, providing for appointment to its membership and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a subdivision design manual and its approval, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend Chapter 25 of the inaugural Code of Ordinances for Macon-Bibb County to provide for the publication of a local subdivision design manual, to provide for an effective date, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Item C is a resolution concerning registered roads for public use, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the acceptance of certain maintained roads as registered roads for public use as part of the county road system and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance with a committee amendment to designate an additional school zone, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to designate that portion of New Forsyth Road within 1,000 feet of the entrance to the Academy for Classical Education as a school zone to set a maximum speed limit therefor, to authorize the use of speed detecting devices thereon, and for other lawful purposes.
And I do believe that it's 1,000 feet, not 100.
It's 1,000.
It's 1,000, 1,000 feet either side is the school, is the school zone. We've got a typo here that just says 100, but that's just a scriven as there. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on?
Yes.
I had your light on. I was trying to turn it on. There, try it.
Yes. I just wanted to make mention of the fact that we are so sorry that we lost another citizen on Gray Highway in the last couple of days. And there are numerous accidents around our community. That's unfortunate. The Pedestrian Safety Review Board is working very, very hard to identify places where we can make corrections or recommend corrections so that we don't continue to lose our citizens. One of those is an endorsement of legislation such as this, I think, which is sponsored by Commissioner Nguyen. We're supposed to have the sponsors listed on this paperwork. They're not on there now, but Commissioner Nguyen. And I'm happy to sign on as a co-sponsor to and encourage other commissioners to also sign on as co-sponsors of legislation like this, because we have a real serious problem, not just in our school zones, but all over Macon, where we're losing citizens, and especially on our state roads where there's a reluctance on the part of the state to reduce speeds. And so, in our discussion earlier, I asked and several other commissioners have agreed to co-sponsor a resolution asking our local delegation if they would work with the Georgia Department of Transportation in increasing the safety on all of the state roads. We locally don't have any oversight over those, any authority over those state roads. Pineona Avenue, where we lose a citizen every few months. Gray Highway, Sherling Drive, Emery Highway, what else? Eisenhower Parkway. Those are the major ones, and as you know, they are very fast and very dangerous. And so, it's, the Pedestrian Safety Review Board gives its endorsement to this, this is an ordinance, which declares this as a school zone. We've also worked very recently on the Northeast High School Zone, where we've already declared the area prior to getting to the school zone and after going through the school zone as a school zone, with flashing lights, with the speed indicator, equipment from the Sheriff's Department, and other things that will increase the safety in those areas. And we encourage everybody to support this. So Commissioner Nguyen, thank you for introducing this, even though your name is not listed there. I just wanted everybody to know who's working on these things and endorsing this, so I do plan to, of course, support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next, we have a SPOSS contract for improvements at the Douglas Theater, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute our professional services agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Custom Stage Services Incorporated in the amount of $76,698 for professional services of stage repairs at the Douglas Theater, to be paid from 2018 SPOSS funds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution pertaining to road restriping projects, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an independent contractor agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Mid-State Striping Incorporated in the amount of $66,312.48 for the road restriping project for the Macon-Bibb County Engineering Department, to be paid from 2018 SPOSS and 2019 L-MIC Safety Action Plan and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution approving the placement of a memorial plaque in front of Center Hill Baptist Church on May Avenue in honor of Reverend Leroy Reeves, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the placement of a memorial plaque in front of Center Hill Baptist Church in honor of Reverend Leroy Reeves, Jr., and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on?
Thank you. It's, it's an honor and a privilege to have introduced this, along with the sponsorship of Commissioner Vivins, and there are several others who've expressed their support. Several days ago, there was a special event that took place at Lizzy Chapel Baptist Church, I believe. It was a program centering around support for citizen advocacy. Reverend Leroy, the late Reverend Reeves was all in to support for not only that organization, but he was also supportive of people who were struggling with various addictions. He was a great man. He was well-loved by Center Hill Baptist Church, and this would be, at their request, a way of forever remembering him and then also reminding other folks in this community that Reverend Leroy Reeves was a great person. So, we want to wholeheartedly endorse the placement of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas, may I approach him? Got your light on, sir?
Yes, sir. I too plan to be, to co-sponsor this as well. Reverend Reed did a number of things besides eulogizing my stepmom, Hattie Mae Tillman. My sister still is a member there. And he also would offer free services to those killed over in the Unionville area. Those were killed and gunned down by gun violence. And so, I look forward to sponsoring this as well, and I think it's a, it's a great honor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve the new defined contribution plan for new employees hired after July 1st, 2019, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and adopt the hereto-attached Macon-Bibb County 401A Defined Contribution Plan provided by Nationwide Financial Services Incorporated and for other lawful purposes.
The Macon-Bibb County Defined Contribution Plan Board of Directors recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Finally, we have an appointment for the new judge of the municipal court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appoint Crystal Jones as municipal court judge and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Crystal, thank you very much, Judge. We appreciate very much your willingness to serve and we look forward to a successful transition for you.[1588.12][1588.12](applause). That brings us to the new, new business. There are several items of new business that have been prepared and sent down that I'll read tonight, but I'll caution you, additional items may come down later in the week, so be sure and check the agenda, which is published on Friday afternoon, for all of the ordinances and resolutions that will be taken up and considered by the commission at committee meetings next Tuesday, October 8th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. in the committee meeting room behind us. Those items that have already been sent down are as follows. Item A is an ordinance to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to $120,000 from SPOSS bond revenues and/or SPOSS bond proceeds, calendar year 2020 BLIT remediation, BLIT Bond Number Two line item, to provide funding in order to obtain estimates and develop a preliminary plan for rehabilitation of the Robert S. Train Memorial Center for use by the University of Georgia Bibb County Cooperative Extension Office and 4-H Program. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item B is a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the 22nd Amendment to the 2018 SPOSS project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOSS project manager. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And finally, item C is an ordinance to amend the Policies and Procedures Manual so as to adopt a new pay scale and provide for automatic annual 2% cost of living salary increases for Macon-Bibb County employees. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. That's all of the new business that has been prepared and sent down thus far, but again, check the agenda on Friday afternoon. It's now time for the next item on the agenda, which is public comments on non-agenda items. Mayor Protem, I've got your light on. Did you have a point of personal privilege?
Well, I don't know if it will fall under that because, because it has to do with nominating one of the fellow commissioners, because some of us and some of them will be out of town, so I just want to bring it to your attention and to their attention, so I don't know if it needs to be referred. We're, wanted to nominate Valerie Nguyen for the chairperson of the, this year's mayor's motorcade, and so if I can wait, because we don't realize it takes place in two months. It's October, and so I just received an email from the mayor, Mayor Smith in Tipton, so I wanted to make sure whatever the process is.
Did you talk to Commissioner Nguyen about this for you?
We talked early in the year, if she recalls.[1766.62][1766.62](laughter). Well, great.
All right, all right.
So I did, but I didn't know how do we, well, how we make it official, because in fairness, although we're not thinking about Christmas, this government, Christmas would end for that particular motorcade on December 3rd.
Okay.
Where they'll be taking gifts in the motorcade, so I wanted to give her and this commission a head start.
Very, very good. It's not, it's not.
How do we make that official?
It's not on our agenda for action, but is there a motion to add this to? Got a motion to? to, got a motion to add this item to the agenda by Commissioner Allen, second by Shepherd? Further discussion on appointing Commissioner Nguyen to be in charge of the mayor's motorcade for this year? Is there further, further discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Nguyen serving as chair of the mayor's motorcade, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Commissioner Nguyen. We appreciate it. It is, it's a very important thing, and we all support you and hope you'll do a good job. I know you'll do a good job. We know you will. Very good. All right. So now time for non-agenda items. And I will, I will begin by asking everyone to exercise decorum and respect for those that are speaking. Please give your attention to those that are recognized by the chair to come up and address us, and let's pay attention. Tyrone Smith is here to talk about us, about the U.S. Census is now hiring people to help with the 2020 census, which I understand is going to be on April the first of 2020. And that's no joke, even though April, April first is April Fool's Day. It ain't no joke that that's the day of the census, and that's when they're going to be counting everybody. Is that right?
Correct. April first is Census Day, but you will start receiving your questionnaires in the mail the last week of March, and you will start receiving notifications before that. So be on the lookout. But the purpose, my purpose for being here today, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me, and distinguished Board of Commissioners, thank you. I am Tyrone Smith, and I'm the recruiter assigned to Macon-Bibb County for the purposes of recruiting your constituents for jobs here in the Macon-Bibb area. The way the census is set up is that since 1790, George Washington put in place that there will be a census, and it will be done by the community. So we hire people in the community to work in the community, because you know your community best, whether than bringing foreigners like me from Henry County to work in Macon-Bibb. We want Macon-Bibb residents to work in the Macon-Bibb County. Right now, we're starting at fourteen fifty per hour plus fifty-eight cents a mile for full-time, part-time.
Fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour plus fifty-eight cents a mile that you put on your car?
Yes, sir.
Oh, all right, sir.
And we, we, we put that in place because we want people to work for the census. As you well know, the census is temporary, so the jobs will go away in September of 2020, but it is paid weekly. And so those who come to work for us can pick their own hours, is full-time, part-time, flexible hours. I need your help. Right now, the United States Census has put a quota on me of two hundred, should I say, two thousand four hundred and sixty-three applicants. Right now, we have four hundred and sixty-three applicants from the Macon-Bibb area that have already applied. Again, I need your help, because you all can touch people in the community that I cannot. I will be in your community pretty much every week until those numbers are achieved. I'll make sure you have my information, so if you need to contact me, please do so. You have my cell phone number and my email address.
Right.
It is very important that we hire your residents to do that, because having people hired is a two-edged sword. By that, I mean if I hire Ms. Jones to work with the census, she can then tell Mrs. Smith that the census is coming on April first, and it's not Publisher's Clearinghouse, do not throw it in the mail. Also, this is the first year that we will be able to do the census online, so, which is a great, which is very great, because a lot of people don't like mailing things back in. A lot of people will ask, do we knock on doors? Yes, we still knock on doors, only for those who don't send the questionnaires back in. Do you have questions at this time?
Well, let me exercise a point of personal privilege, if I may. We don't usually have back and forth, but this is really important. And I'm on the Governor's Complete Count Committee. And I understand this is going to be, you can either go online, and if you don't have a computer in your house, you can go to the library and plug, plug in there and online respond to it by computer. I understand that you can do it by phone. They're going to send you a phone number, so if you don't like computers, but you can call in by phone this year and actually answer the census by phone, if I remember correctly what they told.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And only if you don't do either one of those can you expect a knock on your door.
That's exactly right.
Because if you don't answer by computer, and you don't answer by phone, then they'll come knock on your door and say, anybody there?
That's correct.
All right, sir.
As far as the hiring, I think my time may be up, but as far as the hiring, there is a toll-free number for those who are not computer literate. I don't want to use the computer. They can also call the toll-free number, and then we will take your application over the phone. It will take the Regional Census Center approximately twenty to thirty days to give you a call to let you know that you've been hired.
Wow.
The, the, what you need to have to apply for the census is, number one, you need to be eighteen years of age. You must have a social security number. You must be a United States citizen. If you are male, born after December of 1969, you must have applied for selective service. You must have an email address, and you have to be able to drive. You must have your own transportation.
Very good. Thank you very much for taking the time to come be with us tonight. Very important information, and we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. It's a pleasure being here.
And the clerk does have your, your contact information, so any member of the Commission that wants it, we'll, we'll give it out.
Thank you. Also to your clerk, she's been a godsend. She helped me yesterday with what I needed to be here and the other information. Thank you so much, Ms. Ross. I appreciate it.
We, we agree with you. We think she's a godsend as well. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, oh, yeah. Next, Julia Washington. Ms. Washington wants to talk to us about Vile Christian Towers. Ms. Washington, thank you for being with us. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
What I wants to know is a question. When we, when all this come up about Vineville Christian Tower, and they looking for people to pay rent when some of us will get, had got harmed into there from the mold and the bed bug. So why would they be asking someone to pay them rent when they supposed to pay us when we could have been dead? Understand what I'm saying? Why, why are we supposed to pay rent? I've been left away from there since June and July. Now she's saying I got to pay September and October rent. So what I would be paying for that, I never caught my death living in there, and it were unsafe there in there?
Thank you very much for being here and for giving us this information. But other than contacting the owners of Vile Christian Towers or Housing and Urban Development, I don't know what else we can tell you.
Well, I appreciate what, what all of y'all done, because we, we didn't know anything about it until y'all went and carried it on the news.
Well, thank, thank you very much for being here, Ms. Washington, and sorry you're having that problem. Jake Pharoah is here, wants to talk to us about Cherry Blossom, a Cherry Blossom Festival matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something I've prayed over for quite some time. On September ninth, we celebrated, I guess it's a celebration, the third anniversary of my firing from the festival. Within four months from September ninth, two thousand and sixteen, the entire team was gone. Why, one must ask? Zero warning, zero final warning, zero performance reviews, full board not involved. This team saved the festival from collapse. In four years, the festival was revitalized and brought back to life. Established an endowment fund for long-term security. I personally worked 24/7 for four years. The entire families of all the people that worked at the festival, by the way, they're all gone, the entire team that I had. Over four hundred thousand dollars in the bank at the time of firing. In two thousand and seventeen, my team and I were exonerated for the toxic environment in the Pink House, and that's a fact. Nine days before my firing, the letter was published and written by a county commissioner. I'm going to read it. To Macon-Bibb County Commissioners, subject is Jake Pharoah, President and CEO of the Cherry Blossom Festival. Dear Commissioners, please be informed that this is an open letter, which will be available to the public. Due to the lack of commitment to our community by Mr. Jake Pharoah, President and CEO of the Cherry Blossom Festival, I recommend removing the funding of Hotel Motel tax from the organization. Recently, Mr. Pharoah has requested the Macon-Bibb County to stop the renovation project at Central City Park in order to continue with the Cherry Blossom Festival activities. This cease in operation would cost the county a measurable amount of money. In addition, Mr. Pharoah also failed to follow through with his plans for New Year's Eve celebration, which, under his leadership, provides an end of the year celebration. The Commission granted a fifty-five-hundred-dollar resolution to help save the event in two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Pharoah made promises of marketing and promoting the event. In addition, he failed to do anything for the event except suggest a list of media partners that someone should contact to help with the New Year's celebration. Currently, Mr. Pharoah has never inquired about the success of the two thousand and fifteen event, only after Mayor Rickert sent him an email for a plan of action about the New Year's event that he responded in the same manner as the previous year, stating the Cherry Blossom Festival would market and promote the event along with the reaching out to the iHeart Media. I am sure Mr. Pharoah is not aware that all media partners, radio partners were paid a fee to promote the event. That further shows his lack of interest and vision for the special events. I suggest we deal directly with the Board of Directors of the Cherry Blossom Festival to ensure the ball is not dropped. I'm suggesting a new ordinance contingent upon Mr. Pharoah remains in charge of both the Cherry Blossom Festival and the New Year's event. The Cherry Blossom Festival is included in an ordinance section 2683, 2684, B seven and a half percent of Hotel Motel tax collected by the county is dispersed to the Cherry Blossom Festival in order to promote the tourism and conventions. I have asked the county attorney to draw up an ordinance for your consideration. Thank you for your consideration sincerely. Signed by a Commissioner. Coincidence fired nine days later? Highly unlikely. I need your help. There are four full-time employees of the CBF on second, on record, June two thousand and sixteen are due a five percent cost-of-living lump sum payment. It was approved by the Board of Directors, the, of the Board Chair, the Executive Committee, and in the budget approval process by the full board of the Cherry Blossom Festival. They refused to pay the bonus of five percent. It's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of money to the four people. I'm asking the Commissioners to hold up any more Hotel Motel tax from the CBF until the four members receive the five percent coal lump sum adjustment. Please have the CBF do the right and fair thing. I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Pharoah. We appreciate that you're bringing that to our attention. Next, Mike Odom is here and wants to talk to us about actions and inactions and consequences thereof. Mr. Odom, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've requested previously, I'm going to address my comments directly to you. When elected officials, both state and local, take their oath of office, they promise to comply with the laws of Georgia. Earlier this year, I reported that Commissioners Lucas and Watkins and Senator Lucas had not properly complied with their reporting requirements. Senator Lucas, along with twelve, twelve other state-elected officials, are now subject to a formal ethics complaint for failure to file. Those ethics complaints cut across all sections of our society. There are men and women, Democrats, Republicans, black and white. So there's clearly no animus, clearly no limitation on the huts for some elected officials. I found it refreshing, extremely refreshing, to hear Representative Pat Gardner, Democratic Atlanta, own up to the error. She said, and I quote, "I screwed up. I'm embarrassed. It's my fault." She made no excuses. She blamed, she did not blame anyone else, and she didn't try to deflect the responsibility. Commissioner Lucas and Senator Lucas blamed their reporting problems in part on difficulty understanding the website's forms. Commissioner Watkins had negotiated previously a settlement with the state, but it yet failed to comply with that settlement of the monies he acknowledged he owed. Mayor, I'm requesting you remove Commissioner Lucas and Commissioner Watkins from their committee chairmanships until they provide documentation from David Imati with the state that they are now in compliance and have paid all back due monies. If comprehending something as simple as the reporting requirements is beyond their comprehension, they do not need to be sitting in judgment requiring comprehension of resolutions that affect everyone in Macon-Bibb County. Additionally, Commissioner Lucas is vice chair of the Operations and Finance Committee. I'm asking you remove her from this committee because of an apparent lack of comprehension regarding financial data and documents provided by Macon-Bibb County Finance Department. Commissioner Lucas with no hesitation will just start pulling fabricated numbers out of the air. She demonstrated that clearly at the last commission meeting when documents directly from NBC Finance were presented. She trashed and defamed them and said they weren't accurate. This finance department, I have found, produces very reliable and accurate information, and a commissioner should know what's published and be prepared to quote it and stand behind it, not attack it. Attacking them says that Christie, Eliucci, and her staff are incompetent. I don't find them to be incompetent. So to summarize, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that Commissioners Watkins and Lucas be removed from their chairmanships, and Commissioner Lucas be removed from her vice chair position. Mr. Mayor, you've been on this list, and you corrected it. Commissioner Allen, you've been on this list, you corrected it. Probably both of you. So I'm just letting you know that if by the end of October, you don't take the appropriate action that's within your domain as the head of this commission to make these moves, then I will have no choice but to go directly to David Imati, the state, formerly State Ethics Commission, which is now called the Georgia Government Transparency Campaign Finance Committee. They have the right to enforce these rules, remove commissioners. It is stated in the documents that they sign when they take their oath of office, that they acknowledge state has that legal authority. Mr. Mayor, in the past, you've had a very passive posture, passive energy with regard to this. I really look forward to you demonstrating some kinetic energy and move on this. This commission has to reflect integrity and ethics before the citizens if you're going to expect us to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. I, I note that in the rules of the commission, that personal attacks and derogatory or inappropriate remarks are not permitted by members of the public. However, I find that Mr. Odom, not a personal attack or derogatory or inappropriate remark. So I have allowed him to continue. I will ask the county attorney to, to look into the effect, if any, of ethics complaints that are filed with the State Board of Ethics and take that under consideration.
Mr. Mayor, as a member of the Committee on Committee, as a Mayor Protem, I have that privilege to sit on Committee of the Committee along with you. And according to this charter and our ordinance, only you and I could get together and add, appoint, or remove a committed chairperson. So although you've asked the attorney to do that, may I remind both of you that only you and I have that authority to do that?
We'll, we'll add that to the list for the county attorney to determine. I don't have that recollection. All right. Next, Mr. Anthony Harris has been patiently waiting and wants to talk to us about incompetent police. Recognized for up to five minutes, Mr. Harris. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to preface what I'm going to say tonight with a little information. I'm never here or in public to demean the city of Macon. I'm not trying to bruise the city of Macon. I'm not trying to put a bad light on the city of Macon.
Mr. Harris, would you adjust that microphone so it talks straight in, kind of straight into it, so we can all hear you, sir?
All right.
That's much better.
So as I was saying, coming from a long line of Harrises through my dad's bloodline, I'm fifth-generation Maconite. My great-great-grandfather, Peter Harris, came here circa eighteen forties. First Harris home was where the youth judicial center now sits. That was referred to as the Peter Harris Block back in the records. Again, I have a long bloodline here through my dad. That being said, I also, and he was an alderman as well. He owned a brick business. Some of the bricks used in St. Joseph's are Harris Brick. My dad's mom's dad was one of the founding members of St. Joseph's Catholic Church, Charles Muldowney. Charles Muldowney. That being said, I'm also not ever here to badmouth the police. I'm not anti-cop, per se. My second cousin, Harry Harris, used to work under Ray Wilks. You might know his name. He was one of the, he was the chief investigator during the Anjat Lyles case. He's now dead, of course. That being said, I came here to address a situation downtown about a month or so ago concerning drug use, rampant drug use, and sales at some of these downtown bars and clubs, particularly the Hummingbird, Thirsty Turtles, one of them as well. When doing so, because of the police not being used to their full force, so to speak, I called nine-one-one maybe a good twenty-something times in three days. Well, a warrant was put out for my arrest for excessive use of nine-one-one. On September nineteenth, I was arrested for that warrant. Spent eight days in the LEC. Not so bad. I've been there before, other than the food, it's really what you make it, meet people, good and bad, characters, play a lot of cards, watch TV, football, work out, write, read some books. It's actually, you know, gives you time to reflect, quite meditative. I got out of jail, excuse me, the night I was arrested, the officer that arrested me, which we have a little bit of a discrepancy on who this officer is, young black officer, glasses, he arrests me, he puts me in the back of the car, cuffed. He looks me up, he sees that there's a warrant for my arrest for excessive use of nine-one-one calls. He sees my middle name's Byron, he starts to make fun of that. I'm sorry that his parents weren't cultured enough like mine to be well-read and know that Lord Byron is a great poet I was named after. Mad, bad, and dangerous to know, indeed, apropos. So he proceeds to make fun of my name, so, you know, I don't take things like that, especially when I'm arrested anyway. I might as well go down swinging, right? I'm going downtown. So I, I move on and I start calling him Urkel, making fun of him, black eyeglasses, Urkel, Urkel, through the back of the seat. Well, he gets mad, he blasts the radio really loud, rap music, and I laugh it off, and I keep going, Urkel, Urkel, and then he says, quote, "Shut the four-letter F-word up." Of course, I laugh that off. I say, oh, that's very professional. Good to see you protecting and serving. You know, any other business, you're in the service industry, you say something like that, you're out the door. Say those words at a restaurant, say those words at a Walmart, wherever you work. You won't be there very long. So I start to, of course, chastise him on the drive to the jail. He's very mad, but hey, what can you do? Freedom of speech, right? I do my time, I do eight days. I got out Friday, September twenty-seventh. I warned him, I'm coming after him. Went down, next day or two, went to look for his records. I never got arrest report, never got his badge number or name. Through a little of, a little investigating, I found out he was badge number zero-four-nine. The LEC Sheriff Department area would not give me his name. They directed me to the Third Street Sheriff Department. There was a lady at the Oglesport location who told me his name was Dee, first initial as in Dick, Johnson. When I go to check that a couple of days later at the Third Street Sheriff Annex, they gave me information that his name was Deputy C. Williams. I mean, how incompetent is that? How hard is it to look it up? I smell a cover-up, to tell you the truth. They don't want me to complain against them, and I told them I wouldn't be doing that until something's done about it. My point here is that there's a long history of cops, whether it's the MPD, who are now no longer with us, or the sheriffs, of getting away with stuff. You know darn well, Mayor, you know, the Clayton Sutton incident, you know, a handful of us were right about him after all. None of y'all wanted to believe us. Look what he ended up doing three, four times later. Ends up in jail himself, loses his job.
Mr. Harris, thank you very much.
All right.
For being with us tonight.
All right.
For bringing this to our attention.
Please get your house in order, Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Deborah Wood, Ms. Wood, are you still here with us? Deborah Wood, wanted to talk to us about housing, job discrimination? Deborah Wood? Apparently not. And that brings us to Mr. Donald Richardson, who's here to share some grassroots reflections with us. Mr. Richardson, thank you very much for your patience. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
In Book of Jeremiah, chapter fifty-two. Zadokiah was one and twenty years old. When he began to reign, he reigned eleven years in Jerusalem, and his mother's name was Hameutol, the daughter Jeremiah live now. The counties that is composed of the Georgia Eighth Congressional District and the socio-economic political, private, and public international connections of that legal jurisdiction is the authorized King James English Bible territory. My maternal great-great-grandfather, Jack Spencer, was, whose legal status at the time he was connected with the estate of General William McIntosh, one of the chief of the Lower Creek Indians, was that of an indentured servant or a free man of color who was half Creek and half African. Before our chief, General McIntosh, was killed after the signing of the... After General McIntosh was killed after the signing of the Treaty of Indian Springs here in Georgia. My maternal ancestor, Jack Spencer, when he was, who was connected with General McIntosh, was a part of his plantation mission, of the Jewish Judeo-Christian mission to his Creek Nation before General McIntosh's death. Jack Spencer, in order to remain in the United States of America and the state of Georgia, he had to contract out himself as an indentured servant or a free person of color to Mr. David Spencer, an immigrant from Edinburgh, Scotland, who acquired the former McIntosh estate at Indian Springs, as well as some of the lots in the Courthouse Square in the city of Jackson, Butts County, Georgia, in order to remain in the United States. Mr. David Spencer and his wife were members of what is now Jackson United Methodist Church in the city of Jackson and the county of Butts in the state of Georgia. Jack Spencer and his family and my ancestors were received in the communion, as communion to the Jackson Methodist Church, Jackson United Methodist Church, through the plantation mission as a charge connected with that church. It was through the authorized King James English Bible, which my maternal ancestor, Jack Spencer, through the plantation mission attached to, when he was attached to General McIntosh, Creek Nation, and the plantation nation, mission attached to the David Spencer family, the Jackson Methodist Church, that Jack Spencer, who was half African and half Creek, through the authorized King James English Bible, through that posed that our Creek, Indian, African cultural experience entered into the socio-economic, political, religious conscience of the Anglo-American culture, of which I am a descendant, who is a part of that, what we call the communion of saints, and the angelic conflict or the spiritual kingdom. My paternal family was connected with the Pole Hill Estate of Monroe County and followed the Pole Hill family to Macon during the eighteen seventies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We appreciate you sharing those grassroots reflections with us. I see I've got a couple of Commissioners who wish to have a point of personal privilege in order that they press their lights. Commissioner Lucas, I've got...
Thank you very, very much. I do appreciate the extra attention that I get from time to time. It's just wonderful getting that extra attention, especially from someone who obviously has the short man syndrome.
Commissioner Lucas.
And so, no, this is a point of personal privilege.
No, but still, still, you...
And so, my only other statement will be...
Personal attacks and inappropriate remarks shall be ruled out of order by the mayor. That's out of order.
You should have said that to the person who came here and attacked me, and it's obvious you are in sympathy with that person, but my only other statement is that a mind is a terrible thing to waste, and it's obvious that yours is wasted.
No, that's out of order as well, Commissioner Lucas. That's out of order as well. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm doing the best I can up there. I've got two waiting but no lights on. Who, would somebody punch the light again? Because I can't, I can't tell who it was. Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Allen?
Mr. Mayor, the person was right when he came up here and talked about that I was behind at one time. In twenty thirteen, when I left office during consolidation, I was, I did not know that I was behind until I got back on the board, but I paid it. Let's see.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. This says I got one more waiting, but I can't tell who it is because the light's not coming on, so if you, if you are waiting and have pressed your light and... None? Okay. Well, then I think we've reached the end of our agenda, and no further business. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion without objection? We adjourn.